The work session for the Council of the City of Norfolk, Lanell commits. This meeting is necessary for the council to continue operations of the city and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. And is being held pursuant to and in compliance with City of Norfolk Ordinance 48061 as authorized by Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413, and will be conducted telephonically and electronically. Notice of this meeting was given to the public on July the 10th, 2020, in the Virginian Pallet. An electronic copy of Virginia is posted on the city's website, July the 10th, 2020. There is no public comment during this work session. Dr. Philer, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, good afternoon. You've got quite an agenda for both the work session and the formal docket, since this is our last one before you all take head into recess until the end of August. So, we tried to jam pack a lot of stuff in here, so let's get right to it. For the work session this evening, we've got three quick pop-ups. The first one, there'll be no formal docket item on this tonight, but Andy Fox, the Deputy City Attorney, is going to talk through some of the new gun legislations that was passed this session in the General Assembly, give you a feel for what your options are moving forward as a council in terms of adopting some new policies for the city. Doug Beaver, I just wanted him to pop up real quick and talk about some of the upcoming road closures in our Ohio Creek watershed project. We're getting ready to go into a very, very busy phase of that project. And then Megan Irwin is here to talk about something that you all have requested on multiple occasions, Councilman Riddick sitting to my right here has asked for on many, many occasions, and that is we finally do have a proposal for operationalizing hazard pay and thank you pay for our frontline employees, and so we want to show that to you this evening. The big bulk of the work session tonight will be myself and our Deputy City Manager, Mike Goldsmith, talking about public safety transparency and accountability. This will then parlay into an agenda item in the formal docket, R15. We have some recommendations for a path forward, which I think in my conversations with you, Mayor, with the Vice Mayor, Members of Council, over the last several weeks, I think you all have urged us to get something concrete on the docket tonight, and we have that. And then Adisa Muse is going to talk about the Census 2020. I believe Councilwoman Doyle asked that, you know, where we were in trying our outreach efforts, given the coronavirus and the lockdown. And then finally, we'll have four items for the closed session. So, sir, with your permission, we'd like to move forward.
Proceed.
Okay, Mr. Fox, if you would, please.
Hey, Dr. Philer. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. Dr. Philer, it's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. I'll speak very briefly, just to update you on some state legislation that, for your consideration, to enact a local ordinance regarding firearms in our city buildings, public parks, recreational facilities, and some other areas. So, as you're aware, prior to this most previous legislative session, there's a very strict preemption in the Virginia Code on the city's ability to regulate firearms at all. The exemption was very specific to firearms and gave us very little in the way of ability to regulate firearms in any way at all. Following the recent legislative session, however, there were extensive changes made to the code section that applies that preemption, that now gives the city fairly broad powers to regulate the carriage of firearms and ammunition in what I'll call our public buildings and spaces. The statute specifies public buildings, public parks, recreation and community center facilities, and also areas and public streets and rights of way that are adjacent to areas that are used as part of a, what's called an event, a permitted event or an event which would require permit, and these are expressive events, parades, assemblies, whether planned or unplanned, that the city regulates in the city code under the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. So, the statute does allow us now, as of July 1st of this year, to prohibit the possession and carrying of firearms and ammunition in all of those areas. And I've tried to work with our city team, I have worked with our city team, trying to, you know, consider how this would apply to the great variety of such facilities we have in the city. Of course, we have our core city facilities, city hall, all of our places of business, all of which are public buildings, and that's fairly easy to define and understand, our libraries, all of our physical structures. Of course, in terms of parks, we have parks, we have our festival parks, we have our beaches, we have our trails, and all manner of open space and recreational facilities that are under our Recreation Department, that are operated on occasion by other agencies. Same with recreational facilities, our cultural facilities, our theaters, and things of that nature. So, I've worked with Deputy Chief Goldsmith and his team, many other parts of the city. Karen Scherberger provided some very helpful information as far as fest events and the things that they do. Lynn Clements from Slover Library had some great input, you know, based on her experience with operating these kind of facilities. I've worked with Kat Taylor, who's here today from our office. Kat comes from prosecuting background to provide some, a lot of insight about how we can enact and enforce a prohibition of this nature. So, again, what the General Assembly has authorized is fairly broad and not very specifically defined, but it does allow us to consider a full scope of prohibition for basically any interior, exterior area of the city that the city or one of its controlled agencies owns, operates, or otherwise is in charge of. And we are anticipating preparing an ordinance to that effect for your consideration when you come back from your recess, subject, of course, to your direction and any specific carve-outs or issues that you may wish to discuss. In terms of exceptions to what is allowed to be prohibited, it's pretty much along the lines of what you would expect, law enforcement officers. And those, we would also want to consider artistic displays, performances of scope that may use things of that nature, the international tattoo, things like that. So, we have and we will continue to think very carefully about what, if anything, would need to be accepted from a general prohibition, but we believe we can anticipate that as best we can, and of course, it can be adapted over time to things that we discover unintended consequences and things of that nature. The state legislation does require, and I'll say that this, everything under the state legislation is completely permissive. It does not prescribe any particular action, it does not require any particular scope of prohibition. It is completely up to the City Council what scope of prohibition you wish to consider and enact. However, for any area where there is a prohibition in place, we do have a requirement under the statute to post notice at the entrance to that place of the prohibition. And so, giving the administration a heads-up that that will require a fair, that could require a very extensive amount of sign-making, both permanent, and we would need signs that would be mobile and temporary in nature for some of these areas that would not always be subject to a prohibition, but under certain uses would be subject to a prohibition. I think that's pretty much the summary of the legislation that I prepared that could frame, would frame your decision of, or your discussion of how you would like to proceed. Be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Andy. Any questions for Mr. Fox?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, just clarification.
Ms. McCallum, Marrowan.
So, Andy, you mentioned physical locations that the city is in charge of. Would that also extend to polling places as well? So, for example, churches, et cetera, because that's a governmental activity that we're, we have oversight of, but don't control the building?
We would have to, I would have to consider that, whether that's the city operating, controlling that location.
Places of worship is already, there's a prohibition already in effect, and Mike, you want to jump up on this, but Andrea, there's already a prohibition as relates to firearms and ammo and place of worship generally. So, if it's a polling, even if it's used as a polling place, it's still a place of worship, and therefore, you cannot bring a firearm into or ammo into a place of worship. As it relates to other polling places, because the law speaks to assemblies, events, an election is an event, and therefore, we can extend it to that polling place as well. Because the legislation is written so broad, we can interpret that an election is an event.
Right, the statute itself refers to areas that are owned or used by the city for governmental purposes, so it is very broad, as the Mayor said. My only hesitation was that...
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Senator, what is our next step on this, now that we've gotten this briefing?
So, thank you, Courtney. We will work with Andy and Bernard over the summer, over the recess, and when we return in August, depending on how much input and much work we can get in over the recess, we may have something for your consideration as early as the 25th of August.
Yes, sir, so I think we were going to let Bernard and his staff take the first stab at a draft, and then during the recess, Councilwoman Doyle, I'll reach out to each of the council members and kind of float that concept by them, get some feedback, but I think if it were possible, best-case scenario is we would, over the recess, in one-on-ones between myself and the council members, be able to hammer out a draft where everybody is comfortable, and then we could bring that for vote on the 25th. Another option would be to bring that draft on the 25th, have some more conversation, and then bring it to a vote shortly after that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Graves?
Thank you. Is it, my understanding, I just have a little bit of clarification, Andrea had a good question, but are the elections, the city oversight, or do they fall under the state? And if they fall under the state, are we still able to extend the prohibition on guns for the polling places?
Well, certainly Andy and Bernard can jump in, however, elections, we decide polling places, although it may be a state election or federal election, however, the city determines the polling places. We actually provide whatever security, equipment, as relates to the voting booths or whatever apparatus, as well as the officials who are actually, you know, working the polling place are actually from our electoral board. Bernie, may I jump in on that?
Those are good questions. Some of the polling places are in our libraries or schools, and so they are clearly within our discretion, authority to prohibit guns if we want to. We can check to make certain that the prohibition for churches would extend to our use, and then in any other category, and maybe there are no other, maybe it's only our property in churches, but let us get back to you, and we will email to you what we find out about the application of this to all of our polling places. And so, we've got a draft of an ordinance, and we can get certainty about how this can be applied to all of our polling places, and we'll get that to you shortly.
Okay. Others? Okay, thank you, Andy.
Very much.
Dr. Philer?
Thank you. Okay, I believe we have, next we have Doug Beaver, our Chief Resilience Officer on WebEx, just to give you a quick overview of the road closures. I sent all of the council members a, an email with the actual road closures for this project. As I mentioned, this project is kicking into high gear now, and so, we are going to have some extended road closures, and, but I also thought it was pretty important to let Doug walk you through that as well. Thanks for being here, Doug, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, and Dr. Philer. It's great to be with you virtually today. We are over six months into a three-year project, so we're hitting all cylinders right now on all aspects of the project. We nailed a traffic mailer with the traffic plan last week, and then we followed up today, actually hen walking around the community with our summer newsletter, which also reemphasizes the traffic plan. As you know, there's two ways in and out of Chesterfield Heights and Grandy Village, and we're going to have to close down Kimball Terrace so we can raise it and elevate it. Great partnership with communications, we filmed a video, so we're going to try to saturate the communications market here. Ken, if you'd like to bring that up, I'd be happy to answer your questions after about a three-minute video with some project highlights.
Hi, I'm Doug Beaver, Chief Resilience Officer for the City of Norfolk. I'd like to provide you an update on the Ohio Creek watershed project and some important road closures that will happen very soon. First, some project highlights. Two stormwater pump stations are at the early stages of construction, one at Haynes Creek and the other at the end of Ballentine Boulevard. Large pipes are going into the ground that will pump rainfall to the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River. Work on Ballentine Boulevard is almost complete and should reopen for traffic around July 15th. Westminster Avenue in front of Chesterfield Academy will temporarily close for a couple of months to raise the road and prevent future flooding. It is scheduled to reopen before school starts. A temporary road from Westminster Avenue to Victoria Avenue has been installed through Grandy Park. Work on the Resilience Park has started as well. Please keep an eye out for the construction trucks and equipment that enter and exit the park during construction. Utility work on Marble Avenue continues, and crews on Chesterfield Boulevard are building a berm and rocketty. On Kimball Terrace, we will close the road July 15th for two years, from where I'm standing, toward Campus Stella Road and Brambleton Avenue. We will install flood and title gates, raise the road, and move it. So, that means all traffic entering or exiting Chesterfield Heights or Grandy Village will need to use Ballentine Boulevard. When the project is complete, flooding like you experienced during Hurricane Irene should never happen again. Right here on Kimball Loop, the road will close for two years at the end of July. We built a temporary roadway so you can still access the Grandy Village Learning Center. I know there's a lot going on in your community for these two years, so please follow the posted detour signs and give yourself some extra time leaving and entering the community. Keep an eye out for this mailer with important information about the upcoming traffic plan. Every Chesterfield Heights and Grandy Village resident will receive one. The mailer also highlights several new walking paths to help you get from Grandy Village to the light rail and the learning center. Our summer newsletter is coming out soon, so keep an eye out for it in your mailbox. It highlights the traffic plan and includes important information about job opportunities and the people working on this project. Don't forget to visit our website for project updates, and feel free to visit one of our kiosks located on Kimball Terrace or Ballentine Boulevard for job opportunities, and you can send us an email at any time. We appreciate your patience and support as we build Norfolk's coastal community of the future.
Doug's here with us?
Yep. If you have any questions.
And I'd like to give a special thanks to Lori Crouch and Tony Berrios, who helped film that last week. Really good job on their part. They made me, they almost made me look good.
Great, Doug, well done, Courtney and Mamie. Courtney, you have?
I simply just wanted to say it was a great video, and Doug, thanks for the communications. It's key that we get to these members of the community, and I actually drive by it every day on 264, and it's fabulous to see the progress, so thank you very much.
All right, I know Ms. Graves has been out there a lot, and Mr. Riddick, Ms. Graves, I know you've been out there with me a few times for various events. You want to make any comments?
Yes, two things. I wanted to know the portion of the road that's going to be closed. First of all, yes, great video. I am pleased with the communication. We have not had any complaints, to my knowledge, about, since just one little minor hiccup, but about the communication, so thank you for that and the extra outreach for making sure that everyone in the community knew what was going on. I would say, I would suggest two things. One is whenever you all share those posts and videos on social media that you tag council members in them, and two, also in your videos, I love that Doug was featured in the video, but people don't necessarily know who they are, but they do know who their council members are, and so, take advantage of us when you do those types of promotional things, because people in our wards and super wards will resonate with our presence as well as they get to know Doug and his team, so you can make it a tag-team type of effort. And then the last thing that I have is, on the road closure that's going to be closed for two years, Doug, are there any houses in that stretch of property that we're going to be closing for two years?
If there are, then they will be able to maintain access north, if you're in Chesterfield Heights where Kimball Terrace West is closing, those residents will be able to go north and exit towards Ballentine. The area that we have a closure on Kimball Loop, all of that, all that housing is being demolished, so there are no residents that will be impacted there.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Riddick.
And thank you for those other recommendations, I appreciate that.
Okay, Doug, thank you very much. One thing, Doug.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mamie, go ahead.
I'm not sure if you can hear me, because I can barely hear you all at all. Doug, thank you so very much for the video. I just have a few questions. With the notifications, the mailers, the update and the updates in the summer newsletter, did you reach out to the surrounding communities? Because the reason I'm asking this is because we're talking about two years, and Ballentine, Broad Creek, Middletown Arch, Brambleton, and what's the other one? Stone Bridge are all major communities that are impacted by Ballentine Boulevard, Princess Anne Road, and Virginia Beach Boulevard, and we know that the traffic is going to be diverted to those three major fairways in our city. And so, I'm very interested in if we prepare for those three fairways that impact, you know, they're impacting six different neighborhoods.
Yes, so our mailer, both the traffic mailer and the summer newsletter, go to roughly 1,100 residents. Only about 800 of those are in the community, there's 300 that are north of 264 that get that mailer and newsletter as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Doug, thank you, Dr. Philer.
All right.
I have one question, please.
One moment, Ms. Graves?
Are we utilizing, oh my gosh, the Nextdoor app as well, Doug, with all that information, and including it in those, in those communities that are adjoining, not just the Chesterfield Heights community?
Yes, Lori Crouch and I have talked about that, and that was the plan after sending this video, a presentation for you all, is to get that out on Nextdoor as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Doug. All right, next we have Megan Irwin. She's going to briefly talk you through a memo I also sent to you all a few days ago about the program we have for hazard pay and thank you pay. And the key here is really Megan explaining how we're going to balance the number of folks we can do this with while at the same time staying within the federal guidelines on the use of the CARES Act funds for such a purpose. So, Megan, whenever you're ready, thank you.
Great, thank you. Let me just share my screen here. Okay, can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. Mayor, Members of Council, Dr. Philer, thank you for the chance to bring you an update today. As you know, a few weeks ago, you approved a spend plan for the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund that included $4.4 million set aside for hazard pay. And at that point, we had promised to come back to you with the details, which I'm doing tonight. Hazard pay in the context of our public health crisis right now is designed to compensate our employees who have had to work in unsafe conditions with high risk or potential exposure to COVID-19 over the past four months. In determining who qualifies for hazard pay, we looked primarily at job title and work location. For example, if a position is largely working onsite, has frequent in-person interaction with the public, and cannot practice social distancing because of the nature of their job, those positions are on the list to qualify for hazard pay. In addition, if an employee is working at a high-risk location or program, they will also receive hazard pay regardless of what their position title is. But you'll notice in the middle of the slide that we added a second layer to the hazard pay. The transition to remote work and all the transitions that have happened amid the crisis have been challenging for most employees, so we also plan to provide a smaller amount that we're calling thank you pay, which is pay for those who don't qualify for hazard pay but have demonstrated a significant resilience and in recognition of their commitment and flexibility during this time, we wanted to provide them a little award. Hazard pay is going to be awarded as a one-time payment of $2,000 in August, representing $500 per month for the months of April through July. Part-time employees and those who were hired after April who qualify for hazard pay will receive a prorated amount of that 2,000. The positions that are largely eligible include our frontline first responders, refuse collectors are on the list, waterworks operators, and medical professionals, and then employees who work at the jail, the animal care center, the juvenile detention center, as well as a number of human services and CSB programs, including the hotel where we are working with our homeless community, will also receive hazard pay. For our full-timers who do not qualify for hazard pay, as I mentioned, they'll receive a, the thank you pay, which will be awarded as a one-time payment of $250. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Megan.
Any questions?
Any questions, so Megan? Courtney?
So, Megan, you reflected that it's the folks that have worked in these positions in the last four months. We're certainly seeing a spike right now. I know we have a full 21 million. What about folks like this who are continuing to work amidst the crisis?
Right now, we don't have a plan to, we're forward-looking for the hazard pay, but we can look into something like that.
I think we should consider that, given that they're continuing to work at a time where they could be exposed, especially at a time where our positivity rate's at 16%. And also, Megan, just, I didn't, I don't think I understood you clearly, for hazard pay, are those full-time employees and part-time employees?
Yes, for hazard pay, full-time employees who have worked for those four months will receive 2,000. If you were a part-timer working 20 hours a week, you'll receive 1,000.
Gotcha. Okay, so again, back to my earlier point, I think Mr. Mayor and City Manager, Philer, Megan, if we could consider, these folks are still out there working in a relatively difficult environment, so if we can revisit potentially hazard pay moving forward, that would be great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I can't see you, but I can hear you. Megan, I have a question, please. Our city clerk's office, where would they falls, would they fall under just the thank Um, um, our city clerk's office, where would they falls, would they fall under just the thank you pay? Because they've been working the entire time, um, in the city clerk's office, literally. Um, the city hasn't closed. And, um, so where would they fall on the, the city clerk's office?
Yes, um, they would fall under the thank you pay.
Okay. Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, uh, Courtney, were you talking about expanding? Were you talking about expanding the one-time? I, I thought this would just be a one-time payment of, you know?
What I was suggesting that this one-time payment reflects the last four months or four months period time period, but these folks will continue to work in that capacity in the few months ahead in which we're still amidst the crisis. So, I think they're still exposed to the challenges of our community with Corona. So, I'm just suggesting we not stop it after these four months. And do we need to revisit it? And should we consider something at the end of the year reflecting that work that they've done as well? And to account for that in that 21 million? Does that make sense, Paul?
It does. It does.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman Courtney McDoll. I agree.
Okay. Ms. Graves.
Um, so, um, I thank you for the presentation, and I, I'm glad we were able to come to this resolution. I just kind of want to remind everybody, because, um, for some of us that have been around with bonuses and one-time pay and, um, employees that work for the city have been like, why are y'all taking taxes out of our bonus? And if, if people, um, there are some of you who may or may not remember, um, we did do a bonus one year or something we did one year, and we didn't take taxes out of it. And then, like, the, the, the IRS considered it a gift, and then it had to be retro. It was just a big mess. So, just to be clear that to our employees, it's a thousand dollars, it's $2,000 gross or $250 gross, but taxes will be deducted from that bonus hazard pay and thank you pay. Correct, Megan?
Yes, that's correct. Thanks for the reminder.
Okay.
You're welcome. It, it, it is a mess if we don't do it that way.
All right. Any other questions for Megan? Well, thank you, Megan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, sir. Next, uh, we're going to turn to, uh, uh, myself and, uh, Deputy City Manager Goldsmith to walk you all through the, uh, where we are on the public safety, uh, transparency and accountability. So, I'll let Ken pull up the presentation. Okay, while Ken's pulling up the presentation, sir. So, um, in light of, you know, recent events and, um, that, that have occurred, uh, I think what council, uh, asked for particularly after the June 9th resolution, uh, where you all laid out a few things in terms of, uh, policy directions for public safety going forward. There was a, uh, an interest in sort of expanding that, uh, particularly with respect to how are we doing, uh, releasing data? Um, how are we doing with our training? How are we doing on our policies for body-worn cameras? Um, all of that. So, that was it. Ken, you just had it. Public safety presentation. No, it was whatever you had pulled up there before. So, what, uh, Mike and I'd like to do with you all tonight is, um, walk you through some of what we're... I'd say, I guess, uh, while, while we're waiting for that, the, what, what we want to do this evening is, is, uh, walk you through some of what we are currently doing, um, and so that we can lay out for the council, um, and answers to some of the questions that have come up over the, uh, past several months regarding, um, the release of data and, uh, what we do regarding our hiring practices and so on. And then I think, um, you know, also have a robust conversation on some recommendations going forward. As I mentioned, I've had many of these conversations with you all, uh, one-on-one, and we have drafted a, a resolution, which I circulated to all of you yesterday, uh, that I think reflects the conversations that, that I've had with you. And, uh, this will be R15 on your agenda, uh, this evening. So, I think the best way to begin on this is really with what I would call four core questions that help kind of guide us forward on, on this, uh, extremely, um, intricate and delicate issue with lots of different, uh, angles to it. Uh, first off, are we doing the best we can in releasing data and information on a timely and transparent basis? Uh, the second, uh, core question, and, and some of these are two-part questions, so forgive me for my numbering, but, you know, I, I sort of bundled them together. Um, what are the current hiring practices, training practices and disciplinary practices? And could we better engage the community in the, in those conversations? Uh, what's our current policy on body-worn cameras? Uh, and then the one that has recently become a, a large national question, is there an opportunity to divert some of the calls that we're receiving through 911 to, uh, non-police? Uh, and then how would that be operationalized? So, I'm going to start, uh, with a conversation about the data piece of this. Turn it over to, uh, Deputy City Manager Goldsmith to talk through some things, and then, uh, we'll come back for the final recommendations. Um, the, the first step in any conversation on, uh, policing, really public safety overall, must begin with a review of how we're disseminating data, uh, on our poli, on our policing and on our crime. Uh, without clear indisputable sets of facts on policing patterns, on crime patterns, we really can't have a, a legitimate conversation. Uh, in fact, if you look at the U.S. Department of Justice President's Tax Force on 21st Century Policing, this was during the Obama administration in May of 2015. Uh, recommendation 2.2 pretty much lays this out. Uh, law enforcement agencies should have comprehensive policies on the use of force that include training, investigations, prosecutions, data collection and information sharing. These policies must be clear, concise and openly available for public inspection. Uh, and I think to the extent that that needs to be one of our guiding posts, uh, we'd like it to be. Uh, indeed, much of what we talk about when it comes to data, not just simply our internal analysis of it, but also the way in which we open source that data and provide it for the public, uh, really gets back to the old adage, an ounce of profession, prevention is worth a pound of cure. Right? If we understand the data internally and we know how to interpret it and what those findings are suggesting, it helps us better create, uh, create a better environment for policing and for, uh, uh, crime. So, here's what we already do on our open data portal. We do have, uh, crime mapping on our open data portal. We have active warrants, we have arrest reports, and we have incident reports. What is missing on our data portal is the, uh, use of force data. And that data currently resides in our current annual report. So, this report from the Office of Professional Standards, which is effectively our internal affairs unit, is published annually. The 2019 report will be coming out shortly. This is the 20, the cover from the 2018 report. This, in this report, the data that we have provided are complaints received and substantiated, and these are complaints against officers. Uh, complaints per service call, the race and gender of the complaint, the disciplinary action taken. This is where we, uh, we provide aggregated use of force data. Uh, we provide data on the service call that precipitated the use of force. Uh, we provide the aggregate data on use of deadly force. Uh, and then we also provide the data here on officer-involved pursuits. And I'm not going to go through that whole report. It is on our website, uh, but I would point out just one example from that. And, and just as an aside, I have run this report by some other folks in the field and, and some, uh, other, uh, well, I guess, previous city managers. Uh, the data contained in this report is pretty robust. Um, it may not be disaggregated at a level I think we all would like, and so I think there's room for improvement there, and we can have a conversation around that. Uh, but there is a good amount of data contained in this report. And so, if you look, for instance, uh, one of the examples from the report here, this figure, uh, we do report where, uh, the use of force is, uh, being administered based on the call that came in. And so, here you see we have, you know, um, a disorderly subject. We have, um, uh, psychiatric episodes. We have an officer-initiated event. Um, I, I recognize that's a little small, and I apologize. Um, but, you know, we do provide this. Where, you know, could we go from here in terms of a step forward? Well, I'd like to, uh, show what, what is a dashboard from Seattle.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I, a quick question? Um, if you could go back to the last slide, Mr. Filer, Dr. Filer. Um, I had a question when I was looking at this graph. The officer-initiated event, how does that differentiate from all the other pieces of the pie chart that are colored? What does that, what does that mean exactly, that 15%?
Yeah, so that would be an event that was, uh, initiated either through the officer observing something, perhaps a, a traffic stop, right? So, it's, the, the others are 911 calls based on the nature of the call.
Okay.
So, that one could be a multitude of different types of those other pieces of the pie even. Um, but they're, they are independent, so there's no overlap here. These are, um, individual, independent events. Uh, one just came through a 911 dispatch, and the other was initiated by the officer themselves.
Or so, Chief.
I...
Andrea, there wasn't a complaint.
Right. No, no, I, I appreciate that. I think this is, I think just this dialogue that we're having right now in and of itself shows the nuance and the complexity of some of this data. Uh, because to the average person, when I initially saw that, I thought that was problematic. But now that I have your explanation, it, it makes more sense. So, at any rate, I just wanted to put that out there. I think that's one of the challenges that we have.
Yeah, and, and this, again, this, this graph is, uh, instructive. I mean, it's very helpful if you look at it. In fact, I had this conversation with, with the mayor the other day. If you look on this chart, uh, you notice, and unfortunately, this is small and I think, so I can't really, uh, remember, but I think we have, you know, 16% of our uses of force are a result of psychiatric calls. Um, and, you know, I suspect we could probably be here all night debating as to whether or not that number might be a bit too high. Um, and, and, and so there is definitely data inside the annual report that is instructive and helpful. Um, and, uh, I think, as you can see, let me pull this up again. As you can see from the dashboard example in Seattle, um, you know, it's just the level of disaggregation, I think, is where we've heard some community calls for better reporting. Um, so if you look at this same use of force data in the Seattle example, uh, what you see here is a, a very high level of transparency, broken down by force totals by hour, uh, total forces by type, forces by day of the week. Uh, under the subject demographics, I apologize, there is a legend to this that you can't see on the slide, but you see the different pie charts with the various colors. Those various colors are indeed, uh, by race. So, it's broken out by race. And then you see, uh, a trend line over a period of time, as well as the map there by precinct. Um, so this provides a, a really high level, I think, of granularity and transparency that the aggregated data, um, that we're providing in the report, which is still highly useful, uh, don't, we don't quite get to that level. And then, from there, I think the, uh, conversation is, you know, how can we use this to actually understand policy intervention that might be particularly effective? Right? So, we can release all of this data, and we can create a dashboard like this, but it's merely suggestive. It's not causal. And so, one of, you know, the big things, uh, you know, I used to always tell my economics students back when I lived in that world, was, you know, I can show you data on drownings, and I can show you data on ice cream sales, and you're going to see a tremendous correlation between those two things, though I would never urge city council to ban sales of ice cream during the summer to prevent and limit drownings. Right? However, what we would want to do is, as we're looking at drowning data, we would likely want to, uh, you know, disaggregate that based on the age of the individuals, based on the time of day, based on the geography of which beach we're seeing more. Right? Those are the types of things that could in fact be very, very meaningful data points. Um, and so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to, to Deputy City Manager Goldsmith, and then sort of set aside this, this conversation on, uh, the additional data. Uh, we'll circle back to it unless, Councilman Riddick, do you have a question?
No, I'm good.
Okay, okay.
Before Mike comes, um, any questions for Dr. Filer? He'll be back. All right. Chief Goldsmith.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. If y'all can hear me or not. Um, appreciate the chance to go over a little bit of the nuts and bolts about our hiring practices, um, uh, what we're doing with body worn cameras, and a little bit about process intervention and response. Um, as you would expect, next slide, please, Ken. Oh, I got it?
Yep.
Right, so as you would expect, um, all police applicants are thoroughly vetted. Uh, they go through a multi-step process, uh, starting with a written exam that is professionally administered by a company called EB Jacobs in con, in conjunction with our human resources folks in order to, uh, reduce testing bias as much as we can. It's a simple reading test, um, not a test of police knowledge. Uh, we just want to make sure that the folks have the ability to make it through the academic portion of our, our police academy. Uh, background check is thorough, run by, um, uh, part-time police investigators. Uh, we check everything. Uh, we talk to neighbors, we talk to former employers, we talk to, uh, we run credit checks. Um, we talk to family. We want to make sure, uh, that we're getting the best people that we possibly can into our department. Um, there's a physical and a polygraph. The polygraph is to look for red flag behaviors, uh, that may, that the applicant may not have divulged on their application or may have in fact not told us the truth about. So, we give a polygraph to, to get that. Um, we also, uh, run a psychological screen, and this is the Minnesota Multiphasic Personality Inventory. It is a well-respected and well-researched psychological screen that checks 10 different, uh, profiles. Any applicant who falls out of the norm of answers in the MMPI is sent to a mental health professional for further evaluation, uh, to make sure that we don't have something going on that we don't want in the department. So, our current training requirements, the, the Department of Criminal Justice Services, DCGAS, for basic law enforcement training requires 400 hours, um, uh, basic law enforcement training for the initial certification. That's about 10 weeks. Our police department trains for 27. That's about 1,080 hours of training that we give to our officers just in the classroom, uh, before they're sent to field training. Um, that includes one week of crisis intervention, uh, that is given to each officer before they graduate from the police academy. Um, the training is a combination of academic subjects. This is anything from laws of arrest to search and seizure, to the Fifth and Sixth Amendment, how that applies to interrogations, to what probable cause is. The list is really too exhaustive for us to, to go into for just this presentation. Um, a lot of the train, there are skills training, uh, defensive tactics firearms, how to drive the police car. Um, and much of this is scenario-based. We want to make sure the officers are getting, uh, the best look at what might happen to them once they reach the street, um, and what they might see. Uh, once they are done with the academy, uh, they are sent to field training with multiple police training officers. And these officers are specially trained, um, especially selected, and are trained in, in the best practices of police training to make sure that the officers continue their education once they get out on the street. Um, in addition to that, they have to complete a field project, problem-solving project, and present that to a board of senior police executives and other training officers. Uh, and they have to successfully complete all of this before they are ever allowed, um, to work in a police car by themselves. Uh, once the officer is on the street, uh, every two years, uh, per DCGAS requirement, they have to complete 40 hours of in-service training. And this in-service training has multiple, uh, uh, phases to it. Uh, includes implicit bias training, implicit bias training, defensive tactics refresher, CIT refresher, um, legal updates and other salient topics that, that are needed in order for the officer to be, continue to be successful. Moving on to our body worn camera program, we currently have approximately 530 body worn cameras deployed. They are in just about every division of the police department to include our special operations team, our traffic unit, our K-9 unit. Um, it is a fairly expensive program. Uh, when you talk about the, the devices, the storage, all of it, the, the, uh, guarantees that come with it, the warranties, uh, through FY 2024, five-year program, the cost will be 2.4 million. uh, for us to be able to continue this program. A s- a recent change in the state law has now said that there needs to be a ratio between the number of body worn cameras and the number of assistant Commonwealth attorneys in the Commonwealth attorney's office. That will severely hamper our ability to buy more body worn cameras. If we buy any, when we, and the state dictates that we have to reach an agreement with the Commonwealth attorney, uh, in how to manage this thing. So right now we have a current agreement with the Commonwealth attorney that works for us. Uh, we have hired, I think, two or three, uh, assistant Commonwealth attorneys for him, uh, this year to cover the body worn cameras that we got. If we purchase any more, we will have to hire more. So that, between that and the increasing cost of storage, um, you may not see this program expand any further, uh, because of the cost. Yes, sir.
Is there any penalty for an officer saying that his camera wasn't on?
Yes, sir, as a matter of fact, there is. Um, right now, uh, uh, the police department policy dictates, uh, that the body worn camera will be activated during all citizen encounters while the officer is carrying out their official duties. If they do not turn on the camera, that is a violation of policy, subject to discipline. And as I see some of the discipline reports coming out, Chief Boone is holding to that. He is absolutely disciplining officers for not turning on their body worn camera. Um, uh, it's, it's to remain activated until the conclusion of the event. The only time, and this includes self-initiated events, so it's not just calls for service. If the officer makes a, what's called a Terry stop on the street, they have to turn the camera. Um, the only time it can be deactivated is if there's a privacy concern, i.e. we are in a hospital and we may encounter, counter something through HIPAA. The officer will have to turn the body camera off, body worn camera off then. Or if they're in a house and the resident wants the camera off due to privacy concerns, they turn it off then. But before they do that, they have to announce while the camera is on. That is why they are turning it off. So it will be documented and memorialized as to why the camera was deactivated during the event.
I have a question.
All right, Ms. Graves.
Um, Chief, can you go back to the part about the, um, Commonwealth attorneys and the body worn cameras and there being some rate? I, I didn't quite get that part.
So as a result of a, of a dispute in another part of the state between the Commonwealth attorney and the county that they were working in, um, a state code was brought forth that basically dictated the, a ratio between the number of body worn cameras and the number of assistant Commonwealth attorneys due to the workload in trying to review the video. So any body worn camera video that comes out of an arrest and becomes evidentiary has to be reviewed, uh, by the Commonwealth attorney in order to have it brought to court as part of the evidence package. So, um, as a result of the increased workload, uh, the Commonwealth attorneys, uh, were successful in getting a law passed that basically said, for a certain number of cameras, you will have a certain number of assistant Commonwealth attorneys. Um, so any increase in the number of cameras means we got to hire more assistant Commonwealth attorneys. Uh, so it becomes, it's not just a matter of buying the camera. You got to figure out, you know, what that load is going to be on, on Mr. Underwood's office for you to be able to, that's got to go into your figuring for how much the cost is going to be for the program.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief.
So crisis intervention, crisis response, just want to say, crisis intervention is a core part of the Norfolk Police Department. It, it has been, uh, for a number of years now. Um, all officers, uh, receive this training in the academy. Uh, we have twenty-four seven coverage with our CIT trained officers. Uh, we've got five hundred plus that are, that are trained right now. Um, in twenty fifteen, as a matter of fact, our program was voted by the CIT, Virginia CIT Coalition is the top program in the state. And Captain Wayne Hanley, who did the training for us, along with, with, uh, Community Services Board, was voted the top CIT trainer in the state. That has never happened for a first-year program. So that, that is how robust our, our crisis intervention program is, uh, in, in the city. Uh, there is a small chance that, that you'll have a call with it, uh.
Go ahead, you finish that and then I got something I want to say.
There's a, there's a very small chance that, that you may get a call where a CIT officer isn't available. But that, that almost never happens. Yes, sir.
Uh, that all sounds good. But we had a very terrible year. I don't know, it was fifteen or fourteen. Where in Calvert Towers, the psychiatric person was right there. But the officers felt that they, I, I, I'm, I'm, I can't say they felt like it. But officers killed the guy. Same thing in Park Place. This fellow was known to have mental problems. They killed him. Ty, what a problem. They killed him. So all of this sounds good, but how do we make sure that this doesn't happen again? You know, I, I'm, I'm trying to think of, uh, the proper term for it. Years, years ago, when guys came back from Vietnam, they said they were shell shocked. But what is the proper term for that now, when you come back?
Post-traumatic stress.
Post-traumatic stress, okay, disorder, okay. Um, I find that police officers feel like they got to shut it down right then as opposed to backing up. And all of these incidents I just mentioned, you know, there was no harm or no threat of anybody else, you know, being harmed, but our officers felt like they had to shut it down right then. And that's, that's, that is a problem. And with the post-traumatic, uh, stress disorder, um, I guess it's, it's, um, it's sort of difficult to, to recognize it right then, but somehow we need to try to, try to recognize it as opposed to just backing up. And that's the problem I have with, uh, officers. If nobody else is in the, um, uh, threatened to be harmed by the individual, our, our officers, they just don't know where to back up, you know? And wait, the guy that got in Ty with a pot, you know, coming down the steps, you know? We just got to, we got to, we, you know, we just can't continue to be, I'm going to shut it down right now, you know? And, uh, you know, I remember one time in Norfolk when the, uh, right there at the steps of the mental health, the, uh, place on, uh, Kipso Road next to, uh, to, uh, Lee Memorial, the police officer choked the guy at the steps of the, uh, mental health place. So somehow we have to, and, you know, instill upon our officers, hey, look, if there's nobody else that's in the process or close in proximity that's going to be, um, hurt and doesn't look like the person going to hurt themselves, then, you know, when do, when do, when do they back up? You know, when do they, you know, back up? It got so bad back during this particular period of time that I went down to the naval base and I met with the people who handle post-traumatic stress disorder. That's how concerned I was about it. And, um, so we need to be able to, we need to be able to, to recognize that or have somebody to come out there and recognize it. Now, I don't know what the Community Services Board, uh, uh, what their, their duty is. I mean, because if, if an officer, uh, is in the process of, uh, having an incident like that, when do they come out? Uh, when do, when does Community Services Board come out? Uh, I got a whole lot of notes here. But, uh, all of the, you know, and, and that's just, you know, just like whenever we have a, uh, series of homicides in Norfolk, that they're going, police chief comes back and talks about stats, which is not important at that point. And what we have to do, uh, is to make sure that there's some sensitivity on the parts of our police officers, you know? Because we've seen some awful things in Norfolk. We got some things in Norfolk that we should not be proud of. And having been on council for, I don't know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, I've seen it all.
Okay, all right.
So, one of the things that, uh, as crisis intervention is a very robust presence on the police department and what we're trying to do and how we're trying to train. Uh, one of the things that we're looking at, uh, and what, uh, Dr. Philer is looking at is what we will call an enhanced crisis response. Now, let me be clear, this is already going on in the police department. Uh, this is already happening. And what we're trying, and what is being done is, uh, officers are trying to locate are seriously mentally ill prior to them entering crisis in order for them to be able to catch them upstream, if you will, before this turns into a nine-one-one call and you end up having somebody who has had a psychotic break. And then, uh, trying to intervene with that person and de-escalate, uh, becomes difficult and very complicated. Uh, what we're trying to do is basically stop the nine-one-one call. Uh, in this enhanced response, uh, what we would look at is coupling mental health workers with police officers to a greater extent than we do right now. Uh, putting the officers in what we will call a soft uniform and then, uh, making these calls and being very proactive. In addition to that, uh, the twenty-four seven presence, uh, uh, with our, our telecommunications cooperating with this is, is the ability to divert some of these calls to this team of mental health workers plus police officers.
And Chief. Mr. Riddick. Um, I guess about six or seven years ago, every department in this region had the team that you're speaking of except Norfolk. Except Norfolk. And I don't know if you remember that or not, or. But everybody.
I was the chief, we started this program in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen.
Okay, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But it must have been, uh, but it must have been the year before that because every city in the region were participating, except Norfolk. It was federally funded, I guess, in federal training, except Norfolk. So maybe, you know, you turned it over, you know? But we can't look at ourselves as not being negligent, insensitive, guilty in some instances. And we have to realize that, um, things don't exist like they, like they used to. You know, Black Lives Matter. George Floyd changed the world. His death changed the world. Now, uh, we had an incident where we, um, had a guy up on, okay, their name right there, Ty watered at, uh, uh, Jennings Boulevard and, and Monticello Avenue who was choked to death. Raymond Chandler, Raymond Chandler, you know? So the world has changed. And so you're, the officers got to recognize the fact that the world has changed. And the, and one of the, one of, I guess you'd say the blessings of this area is that our citizens have been so passive that they never exhibit the anger and frustration that you see in, uh, Minneapolis or Los Angeles or Chicago, you know? But one day that's not going to happen, where that whole thing is going to turn over again, you know? And, 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 uh, it's, it's just, so I guess what I'm saying, all of this sounds good, but make sure it goes into action, you know? Uh, like I say, I mean, it sounds good, but we just got to make sure it goes into action.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Graves.
Um, I'm looking at this estimated cost of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars and I guess that would probably be a minimum cost. And, um, and I, I fully understand that we have cost constraints. But, um, I think that at this point in time, it is important for us to do more than what is the bare minimum. And I think that additional training or extra reso- excuse me, extra resources, um, should be appropriated to this CIT effort or to some of those efforts that, um, are to identify the mental health aspect of what we're, of what police may be dealing with. Um, somebody said something, I can't recall if I read it on social media or heard it in an interview or whatever, but what they said was, you know, the police, in a sense, become a dumping ground. You have children in school who can't behave, who you call, you call the police. You have issues with people with mental health, who do you call? You call the police. Somebody's relative, senior citizen or whatever goes missing, who do you call? You call the police. Everything that happens bad, if you will, there is not, the first, the first response is not to figure out what happened and what caused this thing and to figure that out. It's, we call the police. So it's almost like teachers in a manner of speaking. They get to school to teach, but they have children who come to school with so many other issues where they're the nurse, the psychiatrist, the psychologist, the counselor, the whatever, that teaching is somewhere in the middle to the bottom of the, um, totem pole. And so I think that when we're looking at these things, even though, like I said, I know we have cost constraints and we don't have a money tree anywhere that's growing that I'm aware of, but I think we need to look at not just doing the bare minimum, but making sure that we are well-equipped, whether it's our officers or whether it is some community service, um, partnership team that is, that's going to handle these calls. I think we need to make sure that we are well-equipped them to do what it is that they need to do and look at what the cost is. Because the benefit is that our police officers will be freed up to handle the very bad people that they do have to handle, who do commit crimes and rob and steal and kill people. They're designed to handle those people. All this other stuff that they're doing, I'm not certain that that's what they're designed for. And we give them this training for a week or two weeks and we expect them to act like experts in a field that they're not experts in. So that's one thing. Um, the other thing is when, um, the chief talked about, or, um, Deputy Goldsmith talked about vetting. I think we need to vet in terms of when you start talking to relatives and family and friends and, and all of that. I don't know if looking at social media posts is part of that vetting. We need to look at that as well. We also need to look at, um, their propensity for aggressive behavior. And we also need to talk to people that know these people and find out if they're bullies. If they're bullies without a badge, all we're doing is giving bullies a badge to be jackasses. And then when they go out here and they act like jackasses, then we wonder, oh my God, well, we vetted them. Well, maybe we're not vetting them enough. And so, um, that's what, that, tho- those are the two things that I have right now. The last question that I have is, I know the chief, I know the, um, city manager is the chief public safety officer and I appreciate having Deputy Goldsmith here, but I'm wondering, why are we talking about policing? And why are we talking about criminal behavior? And why are we talking about all of this stuff that is related to policing and we don't have the police chief here? Whoever made the decision not to have the police chief here, I think that was a mistake because the police chief needs to be here in on this conversation and hearing the comments and concerns that the council members have as it pertains to public safety. That's all I have.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, um.
Mr. Mayor, if I may please?
After Mr. Riddick.
Okay.
Okay. You know, um, because of things that happened nationwide and the cry for defund the police and all of that, I don't think that this city has a budget, uh, that would allow to defund the police. We don't have any wasteful money. I look at what New York was able to just take off of their budget and redirect. All of the time, now what we have to recognize, this is a two-way street. And what I mean by that, the, the police officer is not always wrong. And I guess most of us would agree with that. But one of the things that I have talked to the last Goldsmith, Boone, somehow we need to put a built-in mental health day. Because you get an officer, he's on the street, he's got to cross his eye, cross his Ts and, and dot his Is. And he go home and smacks his wife or yells at his children. So somehow we have to recognize that this job is so stressful that these officers need, in addition to higher pay, but they need to be able to go in, uh, to whoever their commanding officer is and say, well, look, man, I, I need to take that, that day today. The problem with that in most instances, if a, if an officer goes in and say, well, I need my mental health day today, then some, something else is going to come in and they say, well, something was wrong with this fellow. But somehow we have to recognize that we have officers out there with a huge responsibility and even now with the George Floyd uh death, an even greater responsibility. And so we have to figure out a way to pay them more. We, we understand, we are, we're training a police officer and they'll go, you know, five miles down the road and make more money. And we have to give them a mental health day. I don't know what it would cost. But we need to do that because we got to recognize that they have families, you know, with them going home, fussing with their children or fussing with their wife because they tried to follow all the guidelines that we put on them up here.
Mamie, can I comment to Mr. Riddick before you make your comment, please? Thank you. Mr. Riddick, you brought up a very good point and I just want to say for the record, I don't believe in defunding the police. Um, I just think that's nonsense. I think that we need public safety. I think that we need people to make sure that the bad guys get locked up, arrested and crimes get investigated. I don't believe in that. But the thing that I did want to touch on was what you said about the mental health day. And um, and allowing our, not only our um, um, uh, yeah, uh, police officers, but our other um employees who are in the, in stressful situations to use their sick leave and not be labeled as sick leave abusers. Okay, what goes on in departments in the city of Norfolk? Ask me how I know. I used to work for the city of Norfolk before I got on council. And people are very quick to say, oh, this person is a sick leave abuser. And it becomes this badge of honor to have all these sick leave hours built up. And you can have all these sick leave hours built up and you are, as Mr. Riddick, uh, you know, alluded to, you're a powder keg because you feel an obligation to do your job and everybody wants the police to do their job. But then you, you feel like you're going to be, um, there's going to be something that is um a strike against you when it comes to promotion or when it comes to evaluation if you have used your sick days. And I'm not suggesting people use them willy-nilly, but I think that there, there needs to be a culture change in some departments. If a person calls out sick and they need to, they need it, whether it's a sick mental health day or they just, you know, they just need a minute to breathe themselves or get it together. They should be able to do that without having to answer 511 questions from their supervisor or lie and say they got to go to the doctor. They should just be able to do that. And so I agree with you, Mr. Riddick, on the mental health day, but I believe that a lot of our officers probably have enough sick days where they could take a mental health day every quarter. And they wouldn't put a dent in the sick days, in the sick leave that they have on the books. Because, and I'm not blaming that on the current chief. I'm stating that that may, that is a um culture that does exist in certain departments. And if you go and you look at the amount of sick days that employees have, I guarantee you that those are the departments where they penalize people emotionally for taking time off and using their sick leave. So that's something else that we definitely need to look at. Thank you, Mamie, for the courtesy.
Ms. Johnson?
Um, city manager and deputy, city manager and deputy um uh Goldsmith, I just have a few and I can put it um more detail in writing to you and the council as well because of time constraints. Um, one, I was very interested in what um Deputy um Goldsmith mentioned about the body cameras um as well as in relation to the Commonwealth's attorney. So I, I think that we need to look more into that. All of these things that we are currently talking about are investment to our citizens as well as our city. So the conversation is really good this evening. Mr. um manager, I think you needed more time uh with, with the topics that we're, we're talking about this evening. Um, the other thing is, um, what is the job of the police department? They do take on many other tasks that they are not qualified to do. Um, I think uh Councilwoman Graves made a good point. They become the dumping ground. And I think that um while we're looking at things, we may want, no, we need to um look at the role and responsibilities of our di- um police department, which then brings us into this team, um this crisis team that will be prepared to address the mental health, the homelessness. And there is one that I'm missing and I cannot think of it to save my life. Um, but that this team be ready um to take action um based on the call that, the calls that will be received for um from 911. So I'll put it in writing, fully discussing my question and my recommendations. Thank you so very much.
So Mr. Mayor, if we could go to the next slide, which is the recommendations, and then I'd like to comment after that. Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you. Yeah, so I think uh all this conversation is, is spot on, right? I mean, I think the, the, uh, the recommendations where we are right now and this resolution before you tonight, you know, in, in, I think, to be perfectly honest and clear with everybody, it, it is the first step, right? It's basically you all as council authorizing me as the head of public safety to start a process by which we come to a conclusion on, on some of these issues that, that many of you have brought up uh this evening. So uh the, the three recommendations that I'm bringing to, to you all this evening in terms of perhaps drafting a resolution to forge ahead on. Uh, we can and we should do a better job of disseminating crime and policing data. Currently with use of force data, we only do that once a year. Uh, and I also believe that this should be disaggregated, usefully visualized and available in an open data environment. Uh, we should explore the creation of this enhanced crisis response team to augment the ongoing crisis intervention efforts by NPD. Uh, the particular gap that I think Deputy City Manager Goldsmith, Chief Boone and myself see on this one is the 24/7 round-the-clock opportunity. Uh, currently that group does not have that opportunity. Um, and then finally, I think we should increase all the opportunities for community city administration engagement and so on. Um, and that could look in, that could be in a number of different manners, right? I, I think the one you'll see in the resolution is for me to come back to council on September 22nd with perhaps a straw man version of what we could um perhaps consider as a community policing oversight board uh and, and what that could look like. Uh, and if I could just run through the, the resolution then. So really, there's four sections to tonight's resolution. All of these um really just instructing me as the, as the city manager to move forward in these deeper conversations. Uh, but I really felt it was meaningful to allocate some money, right? I mean, we have to really put our money where our mouth is on this one. And to Councilman Riddick's point, this all sounds good, but you know, what are we going to do? How are we going to operationalize this stuff and how are we actually going to, to produce? Um, and so you got four sections to tonight's resolution. Section one uh instructs me to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of the last five years of policing and crime data with an experienced third-party entity and with input from a citizen panel. The final report and data, to the extent possible, will then be published on our city's open data portal. And then section two, the city manager is authorized to expend from existing funds in our budget uh $200,000 for the development, implementation and maintenance of such a data portal in a dashboard form. And so that's this visualization piece that I think becomes a much better user interface for the public uh in terms of uh looking at data. Section three then instructs me to come back to you all uh after conversations with Deputy City Manager Goldsmith, Chief Boone and myself uh at the September 22nd meeting uh to present a concept and a cost estimate for the creation of a possible public safety oversight and review panel. And then the final section, uh it authorizes me to expend from already appropriated funds uh $860,000 for the creation of this enhanced crisis response team. Uh, I think to Councilwoman Graves's point, I don't think we're viewing this as just the, the minimum. I mean, I think this truly does get us what we believe is necessary for enhanced crisis response, though I would ask for a little bit of leeway in that until we actually run the numbers. And, and to her point, uh to your point, Councilwoman Graves, that number may need to go north of, of 860. Uh, we would, we would sort of do that as, as we go through it. Uh, and that's really it, sir. So that's the resolution that will be uh before you this evening.
Mr. Mayor and City Manager and Deputy um Manager Mike Goldsmith, thank you very much for the presentation tonight. I thank you for the thoughtfulness that went into it. And what I have said to people in the community is that I appreciate the comprehensive approach that you all have taken versus one point at a time in isolation, which is not a way to reform police. So asking about data one day and defund another, you can't do those things in isolation. And I appreciate that you're doing it collectively and I think that's great. Um, I don't believe in defunding either. I completely disagree with that, but I think we need to stand up these services that you've described here. Mamie, you mentioned homeless and I think that's one area too that hasn't really come through in this presentation. But to have the police respond to homeless, I literally was on a call with Andrea this week with our CRO in the Ghent neighborhood area, talking about how every day she is working diligently on the homeless issue. And she's actually writing notes down that the CSB homeless person from the city is helping her. But frankly, I think she shouldn't have to be asking those questions. And so I think we need to get more engagement with the CSB in the homeless issue and that they're responding to where perhaps our officers are today. I believe in that commission citizen advisory. I think that's a great idea as well. But I also want to, you know, pause here and say, I want to commend our police department because I think in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of one of the worst economic crises with civil unrest, I think our chief of police and our police department has really handled all situations very, very well. I appreciate that the chief marched with the Black Lives Matter. I appreciate that we're accommodating the protesters. I appreciate the peaceful protests. I welcome the peace of peaceful protests. But I just want to say thank you to the folks that are serving our city and our citizenry. But can we do better? Of course we can. And I think that's great that we're having this conversation and I don't want this tonight or even the recommendation in August and September to be the end of the conversation because I think this is a continual quality improvement. And I think as we engage more citizens and we improve upon the work that we can do and we use the data usefully, I think we will, I think we will really come out even stronger than where we are today. So I just appreciate my council colleagues for having this conversation. Jeff, thank you for the conversation and I just want to thank those who are serving our community today. And I welcome the additional services um that we will apply to enhance and um improve the opportunities for our residents in the community. So thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. McLeod.
A couple of things to Mr. Riddick's earlier point about PTSD and recognizing that we have a lot of folks who are retired military who join our public safety teams. Do we do any PTSD uh analysis? And um, and how is that accomplished? Because I think that's, we've sort of, we haven't addressed that point and it's a concern that I have. And I wonder if there's any study that show there's a correlation to use of force and PTSD.
Um, if you don't mind, I'll take that for an answer. Um, the police department has one of the most outstanding peer support units in the nation right now. It has been sanctioned by the IACP. We have sent officers on fellowships to universities to get trained in being able to recognize problem behaviors and to make the appropriate referrals. I would stack our PSU up against any department in the nation. They do outstanding work in making sure officers are addressed and making sure that there are any issues with PTSD that they are, that they are being actively referred into these programs. Chief Boone's done an excellent job in making sure that program is resourced appropriately.
Thank you. Um, that's great to hear. I think that's, this is just, all this communication is really important. Um, the second question I have as it relates to mental health and diversion. Are we going to have additional training for our 911 operators as well? Because I think that's a piece of the puzzle that, yes, we would like for them not to have to get to calling 911. But when they do, where is the gate that sends them one place versus another? And will that be part of that $860,000?
Yes, ma'am, that's a wonderful question. Let me clarify that um as possible here, as, as much as possible before we really have gotten into the details of it. But yes, this would require some additional training in the 911 response um in terms of dispatch. Uh, and, and so. Um, what's that?
You already train CIT for dispatchers.
Okay, yeah, and uh, uh, Mike is saying we do train CIT for dispatchers. So they, uh, so we would be able uh with the 24/7 enhanced crisis response to dispatch specific, this specific team to uh the calls that would make the most sense.
Great. And then I'll just, I'll just end quickly. Thank you for the um citizen review panel concept. Um, I know Dr. Filer, you and I have talked about the Austin model and the opposite police oversight. I hope that we look closely at that because it seems to be a model that works well. And independent oversight is something that I hear consistently in the community. And I think what you're hearing from the council too, that's something that we support. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. That's all we have?
Ms. Graves?
Yeah, um, so I do want to echo Courtney Sentiment's on, you know, thank you for the, the comprehensive nature that you all are making the presentation and um I, we have a great chief. I don't know um any other words or, or, or a better way to put it. We really do have a great chief who gets it and who the community um is respectful of, whether you're black, white, Latino, Asian, LGBTQ, any, any of, any of those demographics, I believe, respect the police chief that we have. And so I agree that um, you know, our, our, our officers do a difficult job. And in most cases, they do it very well. And so we just have to make sure that we're doing it to the best of our ability as much as we possibly can and getting them the time that they need so that they can regroup. I still go back to my question about why are we having this conversation without the chief of police here? I would like an answer to that question.
Yeah, well, ma'am, I mean, I, I don't think his absence should be taken as him not being, you know, intimately involved in these conversations. This was really just a conversation between me as the city manager and, and council. And then obviously with all of this now, I will go back with Chief Boone and we will have a conversation. He, at the end of the day, he is the one that is going to have to operationalize the council's policy directions, right? And, and those directions come to me and then, and then to the chief. And uh I can promise you that much of what you're seeing in this presentation and much of uh, you know, my comments this evening, uh, there's Chief Boone is in those comments because we have had a lot of conversations over the last two weeks about the path forward. So um, I wouldn't take his absence as anything more than, than this was just a co- a conversation between council and myself tonight. And then I will begin to work with him over the next several months to operationalize uh council's wishes.
Thank you. In the future, if we're having a public safety conversation, I would like to have the chief of police present because I know that a lot of us reach out directly to him. And so I think it's important for him to be in the room where it happens.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, so we're going to go into.
Okay.
But before we do, I want to acknowledge that Adisa, please come up and, uh, Adisa's here and you have guests. Um, they're going to come back, but at least you can tell us uh you'll be back on the census.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it would have been a pleasure to give a quick recap and a look ahead for the next three to four months with US Census. David Washington, the area census office manager is here with us this evening. We do look forward to coming back to our next meeting to give you a look ahead. It is our feeling that we will be engaged in the census at least through October, possibly November, maybe beyond. Okay, thank you.
And also I want to acknowledge the work that Tommy Smigle and Angela Lee Graves and others are doing on the census. Uh, it was a great kickoff and we have not stopped. So thank you, Angela. Thank you, Tommy and the whole team, um, Team Norfolk for just getting the word out. We have to do much, much more. So we'll be back with a full presentation maybe uh at our August meeting. Angela, Tommy, you want to say anything about that before we go into close?
I just appreciate what all the staff has done. I mean, I know it's been hard with the COVID-19 and it's kind of been one of those things that has appeared to be on the back burner. But if COVID-19 and um the, the racial disparity that we have seen over the course of the last two months has taught us anything, it's really that black, brown and underprivileged people need to be counted and everybody needs to make sure that they take the opportunity to fill out their census forms. There are three ways you can fill it out. You can go online, you can call it in or you can fill it out and mail it back in. But it is super, super important that every single member of our community is counted because resources are going to be very scarce. The federal debt is at an all-time high and the resources that get cut first are to. to the people who are black, brown, and underprivileged. And so, I wanna make sure that people know without a shadow of a doubt that the census is still around, and that the census is still important. So, I took that time for a plug.
All right, thank you.
Ditto.
Yes, Mrs. Smigle, go right on.
I just said ditto.
I did, okay, all right. Dr. Filer, are you finished?
Uh, that's it, sir. We're ready for close.
Yes, I'm due that members of the council assemble in formally enclosed meeting on July fourteen, twenty twenty, at five thirty PM, in the tenth-floor conference room of the City Hall Building, in the city of Norfolk, for the purposes which are set out in clauses one, three, and twenty-nine, and subsection A of section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended. Clause one, discussion of personnel matter and abort and commission appointment. Clause three, discussion of the disposition of publicly-held real property in the downtown area where discussion in open meeting would affect negotiating strategy of the public body. Clause twenty-nine, discussion of a contract involving expenditure of public funds where discussion in open session would adversely affect the negotiating strategy of the public body. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye.